It is six o'clock. All right, it is six o'clock. We will reconvene back into the city council workshop. And we do have something to report. We had a good conversation with our city manager, Dalton Rice, and we're going to keep you. Simple as that. So at six o'clock, we will adjourn the city council workshop and we will open the city council meeting on March 12th at six o'clock. And we should all be somewhere on a beach or skiing, but we're all here. So we'll move on with this, with our meeting. Jeff, you have a prayer and lead us in the pledge, please.
Please bow with me. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to thank you for the blessing of living in Kerrville. We thank you for the possibility that we're going to get some rain this week and just let us nourish and flow and get back to a precinct of green. Dear Lord, please watch over our families as they travel for spring break. Watch over our leadership. Watch over us this evening. Guide us in your ways. Let us make the right decisions for our city that we live and love so much. We ask this in your holy and heavenly name. Amen. Will join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Stuart, you have some announcements for us.
I have just one. If I can get my slide up, and it's going to be the central theme for the next 30 days. So I know some of y'all may be tired of hearing about it, but the eclipse is just, I think it's a month from yesterday. So we continue to get ready for that. We encourage everybody, our citizens, to go out to Kerrville Eclipse site that we've got out there. You can get to it through both the City of Kerrville's page or the Convention and Visitors Bureau page. FAQ, that, sometimes these abbreviations get confusing. That's frequently asked questions. Eclipse, frequently asked questions. There's, most of them are answered out there. So we encourage everybody, if you have a question about the eclipse, to check that out. There's a lot of really good information and it's being updated every day. This is obviously going to be a great event for our city. It's going to be challenging. There's going to be some issues, but we're preparing for all that and we are really looking forward to it. Keep in mind that it won't happen for another 300 and some years. So I anticipate that we'll have an even larger crowd then because I think all the construction on I-10 will be complete by then. Keep that in mind. And I don't have a slide for it, but I do want to say we had our quarterly cleanup along the highway Saturday. We had a great group from Tybee High School. A lot of youngsters come out and help us and we sure do appreciate it. I don't know, Mike, this is one of your pet projects, if you had anything you wanted to add to it?
No, they really saved our bacon because we had a number of employees that normally participate that were out. And so Tybee kids came and did yeoman's work. So appreciate them doing that.
They did. It was a cold morning out there and so they stuck with it the entire time. We appreciate it and glad to see them. Hope we can get back.
You should get the Kerrville Kindness Award.
They should, yes. We'll have to consider that. All right, that'll do it for me. Turn it over to you.
The other thing that, I think you just put this out today. These are 10 things to know before traveling to Kerrville. So this is not for us, but this is for people who will be coming to visit us. So I think that'll be on the website also.
On the website, it's on our Facebook page and it will probably be on the facts page by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, anybody else have anything they would like to share? All right, we will move on to presentations. And I understand our EMS person is going to be a little bit late, so we'll, we'll do them when they arrive. And Stuart, I believe, where's Stuart? There he is, yes. I think you have a recognition for us.
Yes, are my joint or your?
Well, I, I don't think I, do I have something? Did we sign that? I do. Do you want me to read it? Why don't you read it and we'll shake hands.
Okay. You want me to read that one or this one? I think what you're reading, the one that you said.
Stuart, why don't you read them both?
Well, that's my Grant Terry up here.
Yes, let's get him up here.
So Grant's been working, actually Grant was here before I started quite a bit, as earlier, a few minutes, but I worked with Grant for the last 20, almost 20 years since I've been here. So Grant is our water waste, our water superintendent. He owns our water plant and all of our water facilities and produces water for the city. He's been doing that for 32 years?
Uh, 36 and 26 with the city.
26 with the city. So he's been working, so he came to us with MUGR. So I'm going to read this real quick and then we'll talk a little bit more about that and shake everybody's hand. So, and like I said, Grant Terry, City of Kerrville's recommend accommodation is presented to Grant Terry in the honor for outstanding service and contribution as his superintendent of water production. Whereas Grant Terry diligently served the City of Kerrville for three decades, beginning his tenure in 1998 until, with the Guadalupe River Authority and the ASR One project. Whereas Grant Terry's commitment and dedication to the City of Kerrville were further demonstrated upon the city's acquirement of the Surface Water Treatment Plan in 1998. His appointment to one of our esteemed water operators and subsequently promoted to superintendent of water production in 2000. Whereas Grant Terry's contribution to the City of Kerrville's water system has been instrumental in its growth and development, including but not limited to the following notable achievements. Decommissioning outdated water systems, constructing new infrastructure such as ASR Two, rehabilitating storage tank, implementing innovative projects like the membrane pilot project and the upgraded critical facility such as the booster station and the electrical motor control center. He has also played a key role in expanding monitoring well program, advocating for community needs and overseeing various construction projects aimed at enhancing the city's water treatment and distribution capabilities. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the city council, the City of Kerrville. Grant Terry be recognized for his outstanding service, implementary, implementary leadership in numerous accommodation accomplishments during his tenure with the City of Kerrville. On behalf of the citizens of Kerrville as well as ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for the contribution to the city and community and congratulations to you and your retirement effective January 31st, 2024. Signed by all the council and dedicated to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all like the picture?
Well, and I want to know what words of wisdom you have from 26 years with the city.
Keep an eye on everything and report to those above you everything.
Well said.
Previous plant manager said, make me, make me look good and everything will work.
That's good advice. What was, what's been the best thing through those years?
Oh, I, I got so much support from city hall. I mean, I tried to stay on my side of the river and, you know, feed ideas and, and I got a lot of support on my ideas on, you know, how to go with it and how to run with it. And I appreciate that, you know, that, you know, whether we needed vehicles or generators or we needed a tank painted or whatever it was, I got the support I needed and they found the money somewhere. If I had a well go down, they were very quick to get it fixed.
That's great.
Yeah, I appreciated that I didn't have to pull my hair out.
Some people would say you did.
Yeah, my picture from 1998 had a lot more.
Was there one event that was worse than all of the others that you dealt with?
I'd say the snowbit 2021, having to do and go through what we did, but we were able to overcome it within 18 hours and get everything filled back up. And, I mean, it was interesting. It was 18 hour days and going everywhere. And thankfully, the city had provides with four wheel drives and we were able to get to the top of Keystone or Methodist Encampment in the ice and take generators and all that. So that would be the one that stands out the most as the, one of those that hurt.
So what's I had in retirement?
Well, my son and I have a little LLC and we operate six little water systems and my sister and I have a, a retirement community out west of Ingram. So I play mayor out there and, you know, and they're all over 55 and so, you know, they're in debt by nine o'clock. So it, you know, it, it's good. I'm busy. I mean, I have a list where I can just, you know, my mom used to tell me, she said, Grant, your list is your friend. And I've always carried a list. I just scratch them off, one item at a time.
I like that, a list maker. That's good. That is very good.
And I really appreciate y'all so much.
Well, we appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
None of y'all I've known so long.
Yes. All right, I think we need a picture with you guys, so.
All right, where do you want?
Right over here.
I'll jump in there, yes.
I'll open that little thingy, huh?
Yes, see there. All right. Okay? All right. We thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next is finance department.
Julie? Where, where's Julie?
Right there.
There she is. Yes, I'm looking at her.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we, we wanted to talk about this. We mentioned it during the State of the City and, and I think it kind of, it went out as a press release in December of 2023, I believe, somewhere around there. But I, I think this is extremely important to talk about for many reasons. You know, one, it shows the dedication and the hard work that our finance team and of course our, our entire city has done. But it's the, the Government Finance Officers Association Triple Crown Award. And really what that is, is comprised of three different, three different awards that allow or make it the Triple Crown Award. So certificate of achievement and excellence for financial reporting, the distinguished budget presentation, and then the one that was most recently got, I believe, is the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report. And so because of that, it made the City of Kerrville the recipient of the Triple Crown Award, which I believe as of last year was 4% of the Texas cities have received that. And, and it talks about really financial transparency and just the dedication that city council and the community really believes in as far as trying to get information out there in a very transparent way and we're, something we're also continuing to improve on. So let, turn it over to Julie so she can introduce her team.
Takes things and runs with it. And so this was one of those that I just said, what's a PAFR? We don't know. We've never seen it. And so I said, hey, Jacob, you ever heard of the PAFR? And go do some research. And he came back a couple of weeks later and said, here's a draft. What do you think? And so we just collaborated the next few months and came up with what we presented to you guys this time last year and then followed by the budget and brief. So just constantly looking for new ways to get that. But I wanted them to come today because I think, you know, y'all hear from me all the time, but I'm not the one who does the in detail work most of the time. And so you guys want to come up? I know who do. So, no, just go, go up front. So Tara Rogers, pretty new to our team, but happy to have her. We've breaking her in very well. So she's handling accounts receivable. So any money that comes in, she makes sure it's booked correctly and works with Kristen on that, who wasn't able to be here today. Serena Crips handles accounts payable, travel and a whole lot of things we don't have time to talk about. But about 12,000 invoices a year, something like that, that she puts her hands on in addition to her other work. Jacob is our finance compliance coordinator, so he keeps us in line with everything state and federal that we have to report in addition to any special projects and does a lot of work on budget too. So wherever my right arm is.
Why are you saying that? I'm hiding.
So Trina Rodriguez, and you guys know her, but literally my right arm. And so I couldn't do anything that I do without these guys. And Kristen, of course, who's not able to be here today. So definitely just wanted y'all to be able to see them today and recognize them.
So tell us how long you've been with the city?
10 years.
10?
Been here since October.
Okay, you're a newbie.
I'm a newbie.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half.
One and 16.
16, wonderful, wonderful. Well, your award is fantastic and we are so proud of you and we expect it again next year.
We just started on it today.
Okay, that's great.
They deserve a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%. Thank you. Shake a hand before you leave here. 4%.[1028.32]
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the good work and thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, shake your hand, shake your hand.
Thank you, congratulations. Don't run away. Yes, sir. Oh, thank you, sir.
Who's the best cook? Did we get an answer to that? Is who's the best cook? He's cooking tonight.
We'll see how it goes.
Thank you. All right, we have next the City of Kerrville Proclamation. And I know we have one person here. Did anyone else not?
I think everybody's doing spring break or something.
They're having fun.
They're having fun.
All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. City of Kerrville Proclamation, whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of volunteers and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by simple acts of kindness performed by American Red Cross volunteers that provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating lifesaving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all of those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Kerrville citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And it is signed.
Thank you.
Debbie, tell us a little about you and how you got to the Red Cross.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I've been with the Red Cross almost two years, but before that I worked for the Girl Scouts program for 36 years. And I've been a nonprofit all my life. But the reason I decided to work for the Red Cross is because I believe in their mission and we are humanitarians. And I believe that helping people every day and the majority of the people who volunteer and work for the Red Cross believe that. And we're just out there trying to help. I would like to say, and Judy knows this, that Kerr County and Kerrville have actually been selected for a special program called Ready Communities, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. And we formed a committee and we were working with a number of nonprofits and just found out, I think it was last week, that we are working with Meals on Wheels and we have 65 seniors that need smoke alarms. And so in April, we will be installing, hopefully with the fire department's help, installing smoke alarms to the people in need. We will also be working with the Doyle Center. We will also be providing what we call B-Red Cross Ready Training to help people be able to survive the winter storm or extreme heat and how to be prepared in case that happens. We also have programs that we're going to be working with the school districts in the county to help young students to learn more about being prepared. So, and of course, we do a lot of home fires. You know, in our jurisdiction, we have 19 counties that we serve. But of course, our headquarters is here and we decided to really focus on Kerrville and Kerr County this year.
We thank you for what you do for us.
Well, thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have one more, okay, there we go. Thank you so much. Yes, I will. Hi, how are you? Hi, Jeff.
How are you, ma'am? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lots of good people doing lots of good things in our community. We are blessed. All right, Dalton, I believe you have something to introduce.
Yes, this will be very, well, this comments will be very short and quick, but we did State of the City at the Economic Summit. Really great turnout, really great event. And the video that we, I say we, the City of Kerrville team, kind of telling the story of what the city has done over the past year and kind of beyond and what we're looking forward to. It's about an 18-minute video or so, but I think it'd be really great for the community to see what the hard work that our team put in. So, Martin?
Good morning. I'm Chief Chris McCullough of the Kerrville Police Department, and I'm excited to share with you some of the milestone moments your Kerrville has accomplished in the preceding year. In January of 2023, the Kerrville Police Department deployed new technology to all our officers by upgrading our in-car and body-worn camera systems. The technology integrated into the body-worn camera system improves the safety of our officers through built-in safety features such as officer down notification and GPS location of our officers themselves. Smart technology is integrated into these camera systems to help activate the camera through a variety of triggers, including when the camera recognizes the officer is running, when the officer draws their firearm, or when an officer is assigned a call through integration with our computer-aided dispatch system. The manner in which we document evidence for prosecution in cases improved with the additional capability for all officers to not only document criminal activity and evidence through video, but also by giving every officer the ability to photograph evidence and immediately upload that evidence into the digital movie case file. In addition to our technology upgrades, what an exciting year it's been planning and designing the Kerrville Public Safety Facility. The City of Kerrville team, along with our construction partners, have poured countless hours into the planning and design for this facility. We've been working to create the first purpose-built space for not only the Kerrville Police Department, but also the Kerrville Fire Department Administration Offices, City of Kerrville Information Technology Department, and Municipal Court. Within this facility will be housed an emergency operations center that is purpose-built to help public safety respond and manage community-wide emergencies such as large emergency incidents, floods, or other such weather events affect our community. We're also proud to deploy our K-9 unit during the past year. This unit was made possible by citizens' donations to the Kerrville Police Foundation. Once we received enough funding, we were able to purchase all of the equipment as well as the dog and training necessary to deploy this unit. The Kerrville Police Department is proud to serve and amazing, supportive of the community, and we will continue to strive to improve our operations and work to provide the highest level of service possible to the citizens of Kerrville in 2024 and beyond. Thank you for your time. Stay safe.
Hi, I'm Eric Maloney and proudly serve as your Fire Chief for the Kerrville Fire Department. In 2023, the Kerrville Fire Department responded to 11,441 calls per service to include approximately 700 fires, 2,100 first responder calls, and 8,600 EMS calls. This is an increase of 22% since 2020. In 2023, there were also many programs and initiatives that we are proud to provide our community. There are three that float to the top as major accomplishments to improve our capacity and capability to respond to emergencies. First is the public radio system. Public Safety Radio Project is a major project that improves firefighter and police officer safety. We transitioned from the antiquated VHF system that was limited in capacity, constant state of repairs, and unreliable during emergency communications. The new system is a 700 megahertz trunk system with an LCRA that significantly improved our radio coverage and ability to communicate with firefighters and police officers. The system uses additional LCRA towers to expand coverage across Kerr County plus seamless mutual aid with Gillespie and Kendall County. Second is the Whole Blood Program. In March of 2023, we joined a regional Whole Blood Program that administers O positive blood for our trauma patients and other patients experienced severe blood loss. This is a joint initiative with South Texas Blood and Tissue and South Texas Regional Advisory Council to support our regional EMS, air medical, and hospitals. Administering Whole Blood in the field has led to a 48% decrease in deaths from traumatic injuries due to accidents, saving hundreds of patients each year. Third is the Wildlife Response Team. In 2022, we partnered with the Community Foundation of the Texas Hill Country to raise $30,000 from donation and was matched $30,000 by the Community Foundation. We were able to purchase a six-by-six off-road response vehicle equipped with a 70-gallon fire pump, a patient transport litter, and six-foot bed to transport technical rescue equipment. It also has the ability to support water rescues, fight wildland fires, and transport patients in very rough terrain. We are thankful for the community's continued support. Thank you.
I'm David Barrera, Director of Utilities for the City of Kerrville. 2023 was another successful year for Public Works Streets Division. The city's road network, which consists of approximately 321 lane miles, is maintained through a strategic pavement management plan. Since the plan was adopted in 2015, maintenance has occurred on approximately 293 lane miles. Maintenance includes slurry seal, crack seal, mill and overlay, and full-depth reconstruction. This past year, 14.4 lane miles of city streets were slurry sealed and 27.01 lane miles were crack sealed. This maintenance was performed by contractors and with the assistance of our engineering department. City crews from the Streets Division completed 9.52 lane miles of mill and overlay and full-depth reconstruction, which surpassed the previous year's performance. In addition to performing scheduled maintenance on the city's road network, city crews provided their expertise to assist with an airport runway project. The Streets Division received top honors from the Texas Asphalt Paving Association for their paving project on Rossell Street. This was the second consecutive year for that recognition. In 2024, we plan to continue making progress towards maintaining and sustaining the integrity of our streets through collaborated efforts within our organization. This year, we have implemented software to assist with data collection, GIS integration, and capital forecasting as it pertains to the pavement plan. City staff will utilize equipment that was obtained in 2023 through the city's asset replacement program, which includes critical units such as a new paver and a compact roller. The continued success is only achieved with a competent and dedicated workforce that delivers high-quality services for the community. Staff thanks the city's leadership for providing direction, resources, and continuous support needed for a successful streets maintenance program.
Good morning. I'm Danielle Brigatti, Library Director of the Bud Holsworth Memorial Library for the City of Kerrville. The library's mission is to inspire creativity, foster lifelong learning, instill the joy of reading, and strengthen our community by providing comprehensive access to information, education, culture, and recreation. Guided by this mission, our dedicated library personnel work to provide the community a diverse range of resources, services, and programming. Our library campus encompasses the Bud Holsworth Memorial Library and the Kerrville Regional History Center with plans for the upcoming Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. Our library boasts a rich collection of physical and digital resources, including over 30,000 eBooks and streaming videos and 52,000 physical resources. Additionally, we provide public access computers, research assistants, proctoring services for students, and complimentary homebound delivery for patrons. All these services are available pre-charge with your library card. Over the last year, the library has accomplished the following: hosted the City of Kerrville's Eclipse Kickoff Party, which included a mobile planetarium, circulated over 130,000 print and electronic resources, answered over 12,000 reference questions, hosted programming for over 4,000 summer reading participants, offered 345 programs that were attended by 10,000 people, and utilized our library van to bring the library out of the confines of the building and into the community. In the approaching year, the library anticipates expanding its array of resources with new print and digital materials. We are committed to enhancing the library campus, introducing additional community programming, and catering to the needs of both citizens and visitors. We invite you to explore the wealth of knowledge available at your local library and embark on a journey to grow your mind. Thank you for your continued support.
Hi, I'm Julie Behrens, Director of Finance for the City of Kerrville. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about the Finance Department's role within the city. Of course, our primary responsibility is to maintain the city's fiscal health. We constantly monitor revenue and expenditures and invest the city's money in safe and responsible ways. We maintain accounting for 30 individual funds for the city, including the EIC and TURs. We use changing trends and economic conditions to provide the best possible financial forecast. These projections, along with solid cash flow forecasts, are key to ensuring sustainability and great tools to help build the budget. Building the budget is a year-long process and one that captures the most attention. The goal is to build a budget that allows the city to provide services and the quality of life aspects outlined within the Kerrville 2050 Plan. The city's general fund budget for fiscal year 2024 balanced with $37.6 million in revenues and expenditures. 50% of this budget is dedicated to public safety. In addition to financial management, the Finance Department oversees utility billing and meter maintenance for over 10,000 accounts. Our team also participates in strategic planning efforts, manages multiple contracts, and provides support for many special projects. One of our primary goals is to produce accurate, transparent information to the public. We publish annual budget documents and annual financial reports that continue to earn awards from the Government Finance Officers Association. For fiscal year 2022, we received the GFOA's award for the city's first popular annual financial report, which is a condensed, easy-to-read version of the city's financials. This third award earned the city its first GFOA Triple Crown Award. Fewer than 4% of Texas cities hold this award. This year, our team produced the city's first Budget in Brief, which summarizes the city's largest revenues and expenditures, providing readers a high-level view of the city's budget. We really encourage people to contact us and to ask questions or provide feedback. These conversations provide us all with new insight and help us build relationships that are very valuable to what we do.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Behrens. I'm the Executive Director of Public Works and Engineering for the City of Kerrville. As part of my job responsibilities is managing the city's water supply along with a lot of other capable people. The Texas Hill Country is said to be an area of continuous drought to occasional flooding, but we've seen a lot more drought lately than we've seen flooding. And what we're here today to talk about is our water supply and what we can do to prolong our water supply and how we're going to manage that in the future. Luckily, our citizens have been very good about conservation. Conservation is the most important piece of our water, of the water management for us. Follow our drought stages and they do what the city, for the most part, do what the city is asking them to do. So you may say, where does the, how much water does the city use every day? And where does it come from? Currently, we use around 3 million gallons a day. That water comes from four different sources. What is the run-of-the-river water? That's the water that's flowing over the dam right now, the white water you see behind me. And the state of Texas says that we can take that out in a certain volume at a certain time of the year. Another source of water is Dimmitts Lake itself, the ponding water behind the dam. We have about 840 acre-feet of water that we can use back there during drier times. And we can pump that all the way down, and that's water that's allocated to the state or permitted to the City of Kerrville from the state. A third source of water is ASR water. We take the surface water, treat in excess of what we need during these colder months like we are today, and we'll store it down in an aquifer to the tune of about half a million to a million and a half gallons a day, depending on what demand is. And then we start and pull that back out when the river flow isn't as high as it is. There are four sources of water is groundwater. It looks just like our ASR system, but it's actually pumping native groundwater. We're permitted by the Headwaters District as to how much water we can pump. A fifth source of water that's non-potable is color reuse pond, and it's over us per 98. We have about 98 million gallons of water stored in there. The reason that's important to the city is that for every gallon of reuse water that those customers use, it's groundwater that we're conserving. So we use the wastewater, the water that comes out of our wastewater plant. We clean it, treat it, a quality of water that you can put on your golf course, that you can put on your playing fields, you can put on your ball fields, and you can grow grass with it. It's perfect for that. And we don't have to mine groundwater for that. So that's kind of the sources that the city uses. And we've all worked together to build all this infrastructure and all these components. Knowing that conservation is the highest and best practice for us, we still build the rest of this system so that we can continue to live here during these droughts. So with that, we ask that you continue to conserve so that our families and our children can continue to live here as long as they want. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashla Boyle, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Kerrville. Your Parks and Recreation team is as busy as ever providing quality services to our community and guests. Our mission is to improve the quality of life that makes Kerrville a special place to live, work, visit, and play. The Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department maintains over 25 parks, equalling just over 1,000 acres of parkland, 20 miles of trail, several facilities, and a whole lot more. Some of our highlights from 2023 include the following: We provided 27 special events for our community, 21 of which were free to attend. We welcomed 17,000 people to the Olympic Pool in the summer. We taught 248 children how to swim. We processed 18,000 reservations. We had nearly 24,000 rounds of golf and hosted over 220 players at the 77th Annual Heart of the Hills Golf Tournament at Scott Friner Golf Course. We hosted roughly 2,000 soccer players at the Kerrville Sports Complex. We held over 16 tournaments with over 8,000 baseball and softball players at the Kerrville Sports Complex. And we recruited NASA for the live broadcast of the 2023 and 2024 eclipses. We also have some exciting improvements coming to our park system and facilities. The city's sales tax entities, the Economic Improvement Corporation, and the City of Kerrville City Council approved the issuance of a $20 million sales tax revenue bond for several quality-of-life projects. These projects include improvements to the Calo Theater, Scott Friner Golf Course, Olympic Pool, Granger McDonald Park, and the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, in addition to other park improvements. It's important to note that these payments on these bonds are supported by sales tax and not property tax. Thus, this bond will not impact your property taxes. Stay tuned for announcements as these projects progress. 2024 is a busy year for us. We will experience a total solar eclipse in addition to celebrating the centennial of the Scott Friner Golf Course. The Parks and Recreation Department is working alongside Public Safety to plan for the total solar eclipse in April. This type of eclipse is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to view. Kerrville will have 4 minutes and 25 seconds of totality putting us on the map as a prime viewing location. Our department will be hosting the Kerrville Eclipse Festival in Luises Park. And for more information on the eclipse and how to prepare, please visit www.kerrvilleeclipse.com. Lastly, if you see a member of our hard-looking team in the parks, feel free to say hello. Our team works diligently to provide opportunities for our community to get outdoors, be active, and play. Well, that's all for now. See you in the parks.
To the message, I love the photography. I don't know who did that, but they did a wonderful job.
And Martin did an amazing job at really hurting everybody, getting everybody scripts. Now, everybody did their own scripts and presentations, but Stuart and Martin are the ones that put it together. So, thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dalton.
All the staff that did that, that were participated in that, we thank you very much. Okay, I believe we go to the next thing, Dalton. I have a question. Is there a way that people can view that video?
Yes, ma'am. So Stuart and Martin are working on how to kind of get it out. We wanted to get it out in pieces. So you're going to start seeing it on the Peg Channel, on the website. I think they're already starting to break it up and split it up a little bit to get it in smaller bite-sized chunks.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am. That's okay. No, good question. All right, I think we're ready for our visitor-citizens forum. Joey, do we have some speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do have one. George Peruti.
George Peruti, 1616 Glen Road. I was just debating whether to come up. I'm actually pretty dang tired. I'm just saying. So, I didn't actually anticipate the State of the City video coming up before, but it kind of fits in. All beautiful stuff, great, it's all great. There's a flip side to all of it, which is we've got to, we've got to pay for all that stuff. And some of the trends that have been going on, they've been going on for a few years, but part of it, they talked, they, little blurb in there about street maintenance. You've all heard me talk about it. We're not actually maintaining our streets. We're chipping away at some of our streets. But to maintain our streets, I think you guys had a presentation at your last meeting, maybe. I don't know if it told you in that presentation, but we know that it takes about $6 million a year to maintain our streets. And we're putting in about $2 million a year. So we're deferring $4 million every year. So your budget, not exactly balanced. The other thing is, another trend in the last four years, the general fund budget has actually increased by about 30% to 35%, while our population hasn't. So you've got to ask yourself, how much is it costing to provide the services to the same number of people? We're getting less or the same for a lot more. Is that sustainable? I don't know. You do the math. I'm not really sure that it is. The, the, well, that's, oh, and then they talked about the water rates system and conservation being the best way to deal with stuff. Unfortunately, our water rates are, I won't say anti-conservation, but they reward the biggest users instead of rewarding the ones who conserve. Every time you raise the base rate, instead of raising the volumetric rate, you're hindering the people that are conserving water and enhancing the ones that use more water. You might want to look at that. There's justifications to doing what we're doing, but these are trends that you could be addressing. So the reporting and the finances, the reporting's great, but unless somebody's looking at it, the policymakers are looking at it and asking the questions about the trends, it really doesn't matter. Because if you guys don't see these cost trends that are climbing, 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 and address them, all you're doing is pushing it down the road. You guys had a little bit of a skirmish over whether people are intending to burden the future generations. I'm not claiming anybody's intending to, but the consequences of what we're doing is just that. We're pushing off today's expenses to tomorrow's people. I keep bringing it back up, but the public safety complex is a perfect example. But we won't go into the details of that. But anyways, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, and of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have three items. Are we prepared to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Thank you. A second? A second?
Second.
From Joe, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And next on our schedule is the ordinance of our city code for peddlers and solicitors.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four-zero-three, an ordinance admitting the city's Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter seventy-eight, Peddlers and Solicitors in its entirety and replacing it with a new Article Six Solicitations Within Chapter Thirty Businesses of the City's Code of Ordinances. This new article adopts revised regulations concerning peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers as those terms are defined, providing for penalties not to exceed five hundred dollars or in publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. There are four citizen speakers sign up.
Okay. All right, council, do you have anything to say before we bring our speakers up? Anyone?
I'm just here to answer any questions from the workshop between Mike and I.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead with our first speaker.
Jacqueline Hall.
I wanted to, sorry, Jacqueline Hall, eighteen-hundred Junction Highway. I wanted to thank council for taking our concerns into consideration. I've been kind of actually, while sitting there, reading through the ordinance and everything that's been changed. And so I have a couple of things I still want to touch on. It looks like it's making it more difficult for business owners to solicit business door-to-door. And I assume that's kind of y'all's goal, I'm not exactly sure. But I believe that business owners shouldn't have to get permission from the city government to, you know, do business as they see fit. Now, of course, within reason, but the economy is already way too difficult for small business to thrive. It's not just in Kerrville, it's nationwide. You know, there's lots of forces that are making it difficult for small businesses. So I think City of Kerrville should make it easier rather than harder for small business. So additional permits and fees on business owners is really punishing them for being entrepreneurial. I personally believe in limited government, and so I think we should err on the side of liberty rather than on further ordinances and fees and permits of that nature. So I ask, you know, what is the purpose of the ordinance? I'm curious, and from council's perspective, what it is? What's the problem that we're trying to solve? And are we just passing an ordinance just for the sake of passing an ordinance? I'm genuinely curious. People already have the right to post no trespassing signs without this ordinance, you know, no solicitation, whatever they want to put up, and they're welcome to order people off their property. That's already in law. The ordinance wording has kind of become kind of long and drawn out because I see that y'all are making an effort to try to carve out certain folks, which is fine. Again, why do we need to pass the ordinance? You know, it's this long thing with all these exceptions now. So we, the citizens, are capable of taking care of our own property, and we can even purchase security cameras and doorbell cameras or whatever we feel like our property needs to keep it safe. So we don't need the government to step in here. And I believe our country needs to get back to personal responsibility. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Dool Ferguson.
Barbara Dool Ferguson, I live on Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. In reading the changes, I was pleased to see that they took out the do not knock list. That'll be a relief on the city staff that I don't think that they needed to take on that responsibility. So I was glad to see that gone. The ordinance, in the beginning of it, defines canvassing and soliciting each separately and individually. And yet later, it says that a canvasser cannot go to a house with only a do not solicit sign, and if they do, they would be subject to fines. Well, by the very, the ordinance itself is saying these are two different functions. So to expect that a canvasser would have to abide by a do not solicit sign is not an accurate portrayal. And I don't know how you could find somebody for going to a house canvassing when there's just been a no solicitation sign. The law's been clear on that. Canvassing has always had more protection under the First Amendment, and it's not reasonable for the city to expect someone to figure out on their own what the city ordinance is if they're just canvassing in a neighborhood because the law has said those are two different functions. A no trespassing sign would be fine, you know, then they will not trespass. But another part of this that does concern me, last, just a week ago, we had a vote, an election that turned out, just virtually thirty percent of our voters turned out to vote in last week's election. That's the largest turnout we've had. And a lot of that, one of the candidates today on a media show pointed out that that, in a large part, was due to the ground game. That's the grassroots who went out, were knocking on doors, were talking to the public, educating them, and the public responded. They turned out to vote. It would be a shame to undertake something that could possibly be voter suppression. That would be a sad step to take in our community. So I would encourage you to take out the canvassing part entirely. I think the original peddlers and solicitors covered what was necessary. And again, I would like to reiterate that right now, with three people on the council who are currently in campaigns, this is not the time to do this. And it could have been taken up at another time. It's been there for thirty years. I don't see the push now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Caines.
Nikki Caines, I live here in Kerrville. I wanted to thank the council that they did after decades of not renewing this or not looking at it, that you did go back and try to get it fixed. I do take, I question why this is under businesses, and I guess I'm addressing the canvassing part as well, why it's under a business label? Because canvassers can be for-profit and not-for-profit. And I'm looking at basically the not-for-profit canvassing. Actually, even a not, what I call a startup business. If they're just walking up and dropping their business, whatever, flyer on a doorstep, they're not knocking, they're not doing anything, especially if it says no soliciting, I would appeal that even the slow, the new startups would benefit from making some kind of a delineation between for-profit and not-for-profit as far as the canvas goes. I remember at the last council, when this first came up as well, there's a whereas clause that kind of bothers me. It says, whereas other persons often desire to interrupt and intrude. I've canvassed, and we've not been chased off properties. We've not been told that we were interrupting or intruding into their lives. That is somewhat of a negative connotation because it follows down in the same whereas clause to include to canvass for support of particular religious, ideological, or political issues. I would ask that you take another look at that and make some kind of delineation about the canvassing. Everything that I believe Jacqueline and Barbara said, I agree with. We've not had, we've heard from Chief McCall that there has been no major concerns. We don't live in a huge metropolitan area. And unless this was written to not be looked at for another fifty years, I believe this is an overreach as far as what is going on in Kerrville right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Perudy.
George Perudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So I kind of concur with pretty much most of everything that was said. This is a case where less is more. Instead of throwing the kitchen sink at a problem, you might just strip it back and try the simpler solution first rather than the complicated one first. The simple solution is put your definitions in, put in thirty-one eighty that says posting a sign says you can't solicit in here. To Ms. Ferguson's point, you can change the definition of what sign has to be out there. It's a simple change, and that's all you need. The rest of it's solved. You don't need a police state to make this ordinance work. And what we heard last time was a little bit disturbing when Mr. Garcia asked, why are we, you know, what's the motivation for this? And the police chief got up and said, it is kind of about collecting information about the people that are coming knocking on our doors. Well, last I checked, my door is my private property. So why are we creating a permit for who can knock on my door? I should be able to create that, control my own environment. The city's role in policing me ends at my property line. Unless there's a crime being committed that I call them out for, they're not going to come police that area. And so I don't know why we're trying to do that. It's an administrative nightmare, it's unnecessary. And like I say, the problem is solved by just doing the simple solution of creating the signs, defining it, and letting us do our own thing. The additional aspect, I still don't understand it. I don't, you are requiring, or at the police department's discretion, you're requiring background checks every three months for somebody who's going to knock on doors. Now, if this is a problem we're trying to solve against people casing our houses or whatnot in this, you know, we're profiling everybody that knocks on the doors being, you know, a thief, they can still case my house without selling me something. They're allowed to come knock on my door. They don't need a permit to knock on my door. They need a permit to knock on my door and sell me something. So they can still case the place. So you're not really solving that problem. So why don't you just strip it back, less government, unnecessary government that comes with a cost that, my guess, nobody asked the question, what's the impact to the cost? You don't talk about the fee in here. My guess is you don't really have a good idea of how much this system would cost to put in place. So your fees are going to be out of line, which means it's another trend where we're creating a cost, you know, a negative transaction in our budget. So just wake up and make it simple. All right? Thanks.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. All right, council, what is your pleasure?
Well, a couple of questions or discussion for Mr. Giedmore and Mr. Hayes. When you're ready for discussion there. Okay. The, so on page one of the exhibit for the ordinance, Chapter Thirty is titled Businesses, Permits, and Licenses. I truly just caught this right now. I think the chapter is actually just businesses as it's stated in the outset of the ordinance. So we may need to just strike permits, permits and licenses. That was probably trying to encompass what we're doing here. If I'm mistaken, please correct me. I just realized I was going through the second one. I do have two questions. Going back to Section thirty-one eighty-two on page three, we added some individuals or classes of people who are exempt from getting a permit. I was wondering, is this, does this encompass, do these exemptions encompass an individual, kid, a minor, someone who wants to go door-to-door in their neighborhood and ask to mow their neighbor's lawn for them, for compensation? Of course, I assume that's what they're going to do it for.
Well, it doesn't specifically say that, of course. It lists a number of categories, as you referenced. And if you wanted to add that in, you could add that in. You know, I looked at it, and this is going to be a complaint-based ordinance, really with respect to those types of activities. And if, I don't foresee anyone calling code enforcement or the police department for some, a child coming to their door or a teenager coming to the door asking for, you know, to do lawn services.
We don't foresee it, but the question that I had is, is it exempt?
And my answer at the beginning was no.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I would just like to add, it's not even exempt currently.
I'm sorry?
It's not even exempt currently.
Right, exactly, which I think it needs to be. Going right down to Section thirty-one eighty-three, can I get some clarification on the second portion of subsection A? It's the second sentence that says, "This prohibition shall apply to and include any institution or group organized for political, religious, or charitable purpose or organizations engaging in such activity on behalf of any such institution or group." The sentence before that talked about it's unlawful for a person to have certain activities within the right-of-way. Clarification on what that second sentence means, I truly just don't understand it.
That's, you know, to make sure that you're, we're encompassing the whole, you know, what the intent is. And it applies, you know, you can't stand out in the right-of-way if you're passing out, you know, religious pamphlets or proselytizing or anything like that. I mean, this exemption applies to those types of activities as well.
Right. So if someone is at the corner right here, a Maine and Sidney Baker, and they're holding up signs, like we do see often, you know, information here, you know, about a specific religious view, or they want to hand out something for a candidate or a campaign or any type of measure or cause, that's now unlawful, right?
Peddling, hawking, selling, soliciting, distributing, or taking orders.
Okay, so that would be okay for them, what I just explained?
As long as they're not in the right-of-way.
But if they, is a sidewalk considered the right-of-way?
Mr. Garcia, I don't know what point you're trying to make here.
No, I'm just asking questions, I'm trying to understand it.
In fact, we, I can see out from my office window there, and we had activity the last, hasn't been for a couple of weeks, but we had a family or something out there, and I got complaints about it. And so, no, they were in the sidewalk, and yet I still got complaints. We didn't run them off, as far as I know. This would only occur inside the right-of-way, public health and safety kind of, you know, disruption.
Can I get an answer to the question, please? Is the sidewalk in the right-of-way?
It is. And at times, it's considered right-of-way. Now, would we enforce for that? No.
So when do we consider it part of the right-of-way and when do we not? If it's at times considered, how does an individual know when it's considered and when it's not considered a right-of-way?
It should always be considered the right-of-way, therefore it should be enforced.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you. I think this just proves the point right here. I want to go back to what a speaker said to end, where the fourth whereas clause says it's, we're trying to prohibit the desire of people to interrupt and intrude into the quiet enjoyment of people's lives. If people are trying to solicit for their own purpose or for their own cause, I guarantee you, they're not doing it to intentionally intrude or interrupt. Otherwise, they're not going to get the support or the positive feedback that they want from that resident. This goes way too far, and I'll be voting against it.
Counsel, anyone else with comments or questions? Are we ready for a vote?
Let me say one thing before we vote, if you don't mind. I just want to thank staff for going back and looking at this and changing what we asked you all to change. So, you know, it's not easy, but thank you all.
All right, do we have a motion?
Let me move, we adopt, twenty-two-four dash pro three on pro three.
Second.
Mayor, due to the significance of this item, I request a roll call vote.
Pardon?
I request a roll call vote pursuant to Rule four point five.
Joey.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
It passes four to one. All right, thank you all. I thank the staff also for this. And we will move on then to six A and a review of our audit and overview of the comprehensive financial report. Julie?
Good evening. So as you know, we started our audit back in August, and so we've been working closely with our audit team from Forvis for the past few years, actually. And from audit till, I mean, from August till about January, we worked through the audit and then started creating the financial reports for the ACFOR as another GFOA acronym for the annual comprehensive financial report. So Kevin Kemp is a partner with Forvis LLP is here, and he's going to present a summary of our audit and a brief overview of the ACFOR. And just to remind you, this, it's not the same as the budget, and so there could be some things in there you have questions on. And if you'll reach out to me, I'm happy to meet with you. to meet with you and, and talk you through the specifics.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Appreciate y'all having given me a few minutes to go over the 2023 audit results. Obviously, I'm, my name's Kevin Kemp. I am a partner with Forvis. I've been doing this for over 30 years. You know, before I get into the presentation, I do want to, I know y'all kind of recognize the finance department already tonight, but I do want to echo that. Julie and Trina and her team are great to work with. They give us everything that we need, very timely, efficiently, and effectively, and are always reaching out through, to us during the year if they have any questions. It makes our job a lot easier to know kind of what we're looking at when we get, get to the audit. So certainly do want to appreciate, say the appreciation to them. I'm going to go over this pretty quickly. I think y'all got a copy of the report last week. It's a very large document. I think it was like over 165 pages, kind of again, credence to the work, amount of work that goes in to, to get this. And, and at the end of the day, you know, there's a lot of auditing standards that, that you all have to follow to get the award. It's a very comprehensive look at the finances. It's totally different from what y'all are probably used to seeing on a monthly basis on a, on a fund accounting, when you focus on the general fund or, or the water fund, things of that nature. And I, and I'll hit some of that, you know, briefly, just kind of for some clarification points. So we'll go over the audit scope and results and look at a few financial trends, and if there's any questions that I can answer at the end, I'll be happy to do so. If not, I will, I obviously defer to Julie and her team. So of the 165-page document, there's just a couple of pages in there that is Forvis's, and that's our opinions. And happy to report that there are clean opinions. So basically said, we did our audits in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards, and we believe that based on our, these are audits, that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Because y'all receive more than $750,000 in federal awards this past few years, primarily driven by the, the COVID money, the ARPA monies, we also do an audit of your, of your federal programs, where we look at your internal controls, not only over, over your programs, but also of your financial reporting. How do you, you know, make a payroll? How do you pay payables? How do you receive cash? And then we also do test your compliance with the, the specific requirements of those grants. Again, based on our audit, clean and modified opinions on, on your compliance with, with federal awards. So wanted to point that out as well. Then we get into our required communication. If you've looked at the, the ACFA itself, you'll notice that there are a series of footnotes. Footnote one kind of gives, goes over the significant accounting policies of the city. During the current year, y'all did adopt GASB 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements. I will date myself, I think when I first started, we were at GASB 25. Unfortunately, or unfortunately for, depending on what's on the table you're on, the standard setters have been in overdrive. I think probably just 10 years ago, you adopted GASB 54. So you'll see that over a 10-year period, they've issued close to 50 standards that, that your team has had to adopt, and it's, it's quite a chore. This right here, you basically had to go analyze every IT arrangement and see if it, if there needed to be an asset and related liability recorded. So it's very time-consuming for your team, and, and again, they did a really good job. We think from an alternative accounting treatments, found none, if y'all follow your generally accepted accounting principles properly. All financial statements have significant estimates. We review those estimates for reasonableness and appropriateness. A couple of ones that I'll point out would be your defined benefit pension plan assumptions, your, and your commitments and contingent liabilities. Again, we, we think that the estimate, estimation process is proper and complete. And then for any interested parties that look at the annual comprehensive financial report, when they're looking at footnote disclosures, some things may pique their interest. Again, the net pension plan, the total OPEB liability, your future construction commitments and contingent liabilities, as well as subsequent events, are all within the footnotes. There's nothing unusual or unique about the, the disclosures. This is something that, you know, somebody may require more information if they looked at it. Happy to report, we did not make very many audit adjustments to what the financial information that was provided to us. Most of the adjustments made were, we knew going in that we were going to make, they're just outsourced to us out of convenience, and we're happy to do that. Again, it's, it's mainly from converting your fund accounting to the full accrual accounting to, to comply with the, the standard setters and to receive the GFOA award, which I think, by the way, I looked and it was for 38 consecutive years, the, the, the award on the actual report itself. So again, congratulations on that. Finally, you know, there were nothing to report about the quality of your accounting principles. We've already talked about the adoption of GASB statement number 96. So just quickly, a few financial trends. Again, I want to point this out, this is government-wide, so this is going to be the full accrual. It's going to be all funds combined. The individual funds are broken out separately in the report itself. If you're interested, you'll see the, the revenues for Curville for the year was 65.6 million. I did take a look back at last year, that number was 55 million. A couple of things that, that drove that growth was, you'll see investment earnings. Probably talked about this a little bit last year. For accounting purposes, or for, for internal purposes, if y'all buy a bond or anything from, you know, government-backed, you're going to keep that to maturity. And so there really are no gains and losses. You're going to receive the interest that it, that it's paying. Accounting principles require you all to book that at fair value at the end of the year. So there can be pretty big swings based on what the interest rates are doing. So last year, you actually had, or 22, you actually had an investment loss related to your investments. Again, that was not a realized loss, that's just an accounting terminology. This year, it obviously turned around with the interest rates the way they are. So you had a, about a $5 million swing in investment earnings over the two-year period. Then you also just had an uptick in charges for services, mainly driven by EMS charges this year. We talked about grants, because of the, the ARPA grants, there was about a 1.7 million kind of increase in over 22 related to, to capital and operating grants. And then finally, there was a little bit of an increase, I think about, again, about 1.7 million in property tax revenue. So see the chart, you know, kind of where your, your monies are coming from on an individual or line item basis. Same way with expenses. Again, this is government-wide, includes all of your funds plus water and sewer operations, also includes depreciation expense. 56 million, I think last year was 48.7 million. Obviously, the inflation that the US have seen across the country dri, has driven part of that, as well as payroll and salary increases that were, were needed and given, as well as, I'm going to go ahead and point this out, all, y'all do participate in the Texas municipal retirement system. I mentioned earlier that they have a lot of assumptions. One of those is like their rate of return. They, their current system says that they're going to earn 7% annually on their investments. It's a pretty reasonable estimate, you know, based on trends, but at the measurement date was at, which is as of calendar year end, December 31st, 22, obviously, you'll, you'll notice that invest, our market was down considerably at the end of 22. So y'all actually went from a 100.8% funded at 930, 22, to only 94%, and I'm sorry, 87.6% funded in 2023. A healthy funded pension plan, people say, is 80%. So obviously, you are well above that. And again, y'all, the actuary tells y'all what to pay on an annual basis, y'all pay that amount. But swings in, in the investment return can impact the liability that you record pretty significantly on an annual basis. So I did want to point that out. And then general fund, fund balance, you'll see that this is just the unassigned amount, things that have not already been committed or assigned either internal by the council or by management. So you'll see that at 14 million, it's grown pretty, pretty nicely over the past couple of years. Your unassigned fund balance was 38% of your general fund expenditures. GFOA has some benchmarks that they use. They say that number should be a minimum of 16% or two months' worth of operations. They've never really said if there's a, a high percentage, it's too bad. But anyway, think that just kind of echoes that you're in a pretty strong position at the general fund, fund balance level. Any questions for me? No, that was quick, but again, just from our end, nothing but, but good to report. So.
All right. Well, we appreciate it. We know they do a good job, so it's nice to have that reaffirmed.
And Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Oh, okay. And that would be?
George Broody.
So it's George Broody, 666 in Glen Road. First one is, just a request, this is like the only opportunity we have to ask the auditor any questions. It would be really helpful if we could go back to the way it used to be, where this report was available to the public, at least in the packet or something, so that we could look at it and generate the couple of questions. I do have one. The city a few years ago changed away from the, I think it was called the Modified Approach, I think it was GASB 34 maybe, having to do with our streets and whatnot. If, if you, if what we're doing is, and I'm not even sure, are we just depreciating out the value of our streets? And if so, how do we capture, because our, our financial policy says we should capture expense as it's incurred, not when it's invoiced or when it's paid? And if the wear and tear on streets is incurring throughout the year, are we required to capture that, and if so, where? That's pretty much my question. Thank you.
Do you guys have an answer, or is that something you need to research?
I, I can try, and there may be, it may be more specific. So every asset that we have has a useful life, and so we use a, a standard valuation for every asset, depending on whether it's a vehicle, a street, a building, anything but land, gets depreciated based on that useful life. Streets happen to be 20 years, so from the time that street is, I'm going to call it complete if we just rebuilt it, and we have paid for all of that, at the end of that year, then depreciation begins at that time. If it's still in progress, then you'll notice in depreciation schedule, there's construction in progress, things listed, so those things get carried over, because most CIP projects go from one year to the next. So Westminster, for example, started in one year, completed in the next. So that does roll over into the total of our assets, and so to really dig down into streets is a very long conversation, which, you know, we're happy to do, and I can break that apart, but it, it basically is cumulative with, with all of our assets. So, you know, it's hard to get to that number without a little bit of time. But if that's what you're asking for, you want to know exactly how much money we're depreciating in streets compared to what we're spending, that's a simple thing for me to do, if, if that's the request.
Okay.
Which we've, I mean, we've, and we've talked about this, and, and Mr. Broody and I have even talked about this in detail, as far as when we changed the way that we were depreciating streets, because basically, we were in the low majority in the way it was being done before. So we kind of brought us up to the correct, not that we were doing it wrong, but into the majority of the way people are depreciating streets. So it makes it a lot easier to account for it over time. So would you agree with that percentage, Kevin? I mean, I think it, I think at the time, it was like 6% or something of the clients that they had were doing it the way we used to do it. So we just, and when that changed, it did look like a big number, because we reevaluated, and, you know, the values changed, and we gave a really long explanation. In fact, I think we had a workshop on that.
And Mr. Broody, you know, you're welcome to. If you need more information, why check with Ju, with Julie.
Yeah, very happy to do that.
Thank you. Do you, I'm sorry. Do you know when the report will be available for public on the website or anything?
We should, we should be able to put it on the website tomorrow. We did not finalize it until the night before I sent it to you. So, I mean, I understand everyone would like it, just understand the amount of work that goes into producing it. We would like to get it out earlier, but it, it's a lot of work, and we want to make sure before it goes out, it's correct. And so we spent almost two weeks just doing nothing but proofing and going back and, and tweaking and finding things that, you know, may have been even simply formatting errors. And so, you know, as much as we'd like to put it out there, we want to make sure that when we do, it's correct. But remember that we are asking for your acceptance tonight, not approval, and that's because of the nature of the document. I mean, we have professionals that, that do that, and that's why we have oversight. So again, that report is available, and, and we can discuss that anytime. You know, specific questions for the auditor, you know, that's a different role, and, and the information as far as very specifics and less it's something about, and generally accepted accounting practice or something like that. If it's specific, then we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
My only request for this, probably just, manager, I have no, you know, problem with the timeframe that it was at least put out, like on the Friday, but in conjunction and proximity to this regular meeting, it'd probably been better to have this type of report, so council could have dug in more deep into the report if they, any council member wanted to, and members of the public, since this is the prime time for everybody to participate in that discussion and dialogue with questions. So this could have probably been done at our next meeting this month. Still posted, it couldn't have been?
So we have a March 31st deadline.
That's right.
For both, well, that's not just our policy, that, that's a municipal government policy. So we have a March 31st deadline, so if we don't get it to you on the first meeting, if there were any issues, then that doesn't give us any room. If there were, you know, anything that needed to be addressed, and not that it can be changed as far as the report itself, but if there were specific questions we need to come back to you with before that deadline in order to get that acceptance, we wouldn't have time to do it if we did it on the last meeting. And I know, you know, there have been times when we've been able to get it out in the second week in February, but it's, it's tough. It's really tough. If that's the only thing we were doing, you know, maybe we could get it out at that time. But last year, we moved it to March, and it was a lot more effective and gave us a little bit more time to review and make sure that everything was put together the way it's supposed to be. But March 31st is our deadline, not just for this, but also for GFOA submission.
Do you say we can make changes to the report after?
We cannot make changes to the report, period. I mean, the report is final.
So then, having the report, this is probably, we could, you know, probably have more internal discussion on this. I think it's just the processes that come together with, of course, all the moving parts and how the agenda's, you know, prepared and, you know, working with the different departments to put all this together. I do think, though, having that additional timeframe, whether it needs, this report needs to come out sooner, or, or what it is, I think it, it's...
And we can have that discussion after as well, Mr. Garcia.
Absolutely.
So if that's something you wanted to do, you know, we can certainly have it after the fact, because that, you know, the report is what the report is. Now, if there needs to be specifics, we need to dive in or anything like that, we could, we can certainly do that after, there's no reason we can't.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I also appreciate Julie, your, your wanting to, what, that what is put out is correct, and this is a very complicated thing, and I'm glad you guys are doing it and not me, and so I appreciate that, that you're, you're taking that extra time. So, thank you. Do we need a motion?
I move to accept the annual comprehensive financial report.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand, please, and it passes unanimously. All right. Thank you again, Kevin. Thank you for being with us. We appreciate it very much. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything that any council member would like to put on an item, or an item that they would like to put on a future agenda?
Mayor, I, I've been discussing with several members of staff about existing grants for facade improvements for small businesses.
So you got a good?
Is there, are there existing grants for facade improvements for small businesses, generally in the downtown area, but anywhere? And I think it's something we could explore that would help some of our small businesses in the downtown area, but all over the city, if there were such grants available to them. And... And I'm hoping someone will agree with me and have it on a future agenda.
Okay, I would second that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. And you guys put that on a future agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Take a look at it, all right, thank you, thank you. Anything else, counsel? Anything for the good of the cause? All right, at 7:30 on the dot, we will close the meeting. And all of you have a good evening and happy spring break.